Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the October 23rd, 2018 Planning Board meeting to order. Would you please rise and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All present and accounted for this evening. One comment, and that is the cable has asked us if we could please speak up a little. Obviously, we're all mild-mannered, peaceful people, and we have a tendency to talk too lowly. Item one, continued, public hearing. Father and son, realty trust, Todd Fitzgerald, five lot subdivision on Courierville Road, block 15, lot 2, lot 1-1.
Good evening. Dennis Quintel, representing Todd Fitzgerald, who's here. So, just a brief summary. This is a piece of property on Courierville Road. We've been at a few meetings here, talking about the subdivision of this property. At the last meeting, we talked about continuing to tonight, to make a few corrections. And one of them was, I did pick up a spelling error, but there is one more error that Roger just pointed out to me about the reference for zoning. So, I certainly will make that change. On sheet two, because there was questions from the Conservation Commission about sediment control, protecting the wetlands, on the second sheet, I added areas on each lot that is closer to 100 feet where there's going to be some, we know there's going to be disturbance with placement of wells and the edge of clearing near the house. I showed an area, a line for, put up some fencing for sediment control. This is to prevent any sediments from eroding and flowing into the wetlands. So, obviously, when work is done close to wetlands, they have to be protected. And so, just to address that concern, I just showed it on the plan so that you'll know that some sediment control will be placed when the construction is done. And just depending on how long it's going to be there, it just depends on how long the construction work is going to take place. In addition, there was a request for a report from the wetland scientist on delineating the wetlands. And so, I made copies, two or three copies for the board. I passed those out to you. I also sent one to Jennifer today for review. So, those were the things that we were challenged last, the end of last meeting, to take a look at doing. And just as a review, prior to that meeting, we did add the state subdivision approval number on the plan. We added a 15-foot easement across the front of all the lots to allow for any future grading, excavation, cutting trees, and grading and excavating for drainage along the front of the lots, if the town chooses to do that, and they would have the ability to do that, and having that easement across the front of all the lots. By putting that easement on there, there was a couple of the septic system, 4,000-square-foot area, reserve areas, that had to move away from that easement a little bit on the front, where they were closer. And I remember, Charlie, you mentioned how close they were to the street. Because we're putting this 15-foot easement across the front, I had to move those 4,000-square-foot areas back a little bit so there wouldn't be any impacts to that easement area. Well, it's up to the town. We're just showing an area where you could do it in the future. So, the only thing that's going to be disturbed now is where the driveways are. Right now, they're not going to do anything along the street. Just, any trees that are there are only going to be the dead ones and the ones that are hazardous to the development. But as far as maintaining the scenic value there along the street, they, I mean, that's up to the town. We can certainly meet with town agents and officials and let them know what trees you want to take down in addition to the ones that are necessary for the driveways. So, we'll take a look at the driveway placements and minimizing vegetation disturbance as much as possible. But if there are some trees that are hazardous that should come down, it certainly can take them while we're doing it so it's not an expense to the town in the future. So, that's certainly something to work out between the builder and Mr. Fitzgerald and the town at the time. So, I think that that's what would address the concerns that I think we had questions of in the past. Also, I had a detail that I added for the driveways to show how the grading from the street will go onto the lots from putting the driveways in, so there won't be any water running from the driveways onto the street. But anything that's on the edge of the roadways, that's right there, would go into the driveways instead of along the edge of the road. So, those are, those are things on the plans that we added for that meeting. And also, we discussed the bonding, the concern for the improvements to Courierville Road, since it is a gravel road. Mr. Fitzgerald made the statement that wish, he would, as a condition of approval, that a $10,000 bond would be put in place. And that amount of money was based on three proposals that we got to put crushed asphalt along, on Courierville Road. About 400 tons is what it estimates to be, like a new surface on it. It's crushed asphalt, and it packs a little bit better than gravel, and will last a lot longer. So, that is what we talked about, and would be a condition of approval for putting that money aside for that. And it would probably be in the best interest to wait till most of the development is done. And, but that's something that certainly can be worked out as to when that actual work is going to get done. The other bond would be $5,000 bond put in place. And that would be to cover a cost of additional work of taking care of the road during the construction process, which might take a few years. And right now, the road agent grades the road two or three times a year. And if, because of the added traffic for construction equipment, trucks going in and out of the project, then there would be money there for the road agent to use that money for extra work of grading the road up during that time. So, that information was provided to the town road agent and the town engineer. And so, that's what we presented to the board the last meeting. And therefore, that's where we stand right now. So, I just hopefully can answer any questions the board has and be able to move this further along.
Just a point of information before we get to that point. Are you saying that the crushed asphalt is $1,400 less than new gravel surface?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, are you saying that the crushed asphalt is $1,400 less? Because the bond recommendation is $11,400.
No. I spoke to Mr. McNally today.
Oh, okay.
And he said there's $10,000, and there's $5,000 are the amounts. This is something should the town need to do something after the fact. So, it's the $10,000 and the $5,000.
Okay.
All right. I did speak to him today.
But that isn't what the paper says. What we received from the town engineer has the $10,000 plus the engineering fee and contingency, which he always adds in.
But he says that that gets billed after the fact. That's not part of this bond.
It's not part of the bond.
We always put it in as part of the bond. We haven't, we haven't done anything yet.
I'll find it. Go ahead. We, can we revisit this a minute until I, you know, after I find this?
Well, we're in a condition. We haven't got to the condition yet.
Right.
However, it's inappropriate.
Well, now I cannot find it. I can't find it. I just talked to him this afternoon.
I will as soon as Barbara's, he's our secretary for the evening.
Here you go. Because I was confused. It says, just to be clear, the financial guarantee amounts should be the construction amounts, $5,000 and $10,000, plus the, plus the, plus the 4% engineering and 10% contingency. Okay. NEPA building for reviews now and any construction oversight is in addition to it and is not shown on the estimate. Okay, you are right. Okay, sorry. I misunderstood.
No, no problem.
So, it's $11,400 and $5,700.
At this point, I'll appoint Mr. Zott as a voting member. Very well. Before we get to board comments and action, are there any abutters who wish to make comment? Hearing none. Board comments, questions, motions?
I got a couple, Jim.
Okay. Can you talk loud enough so we can hear too?
I think all subdivisions have to be on the town-approved road. I don't believe that Courierville Road is a town-approved road.
It is. No, it's a town-approved road, and by town vote, it is not paved.
It has to be considered a Class 5 road.
Right.
Yeah. And the road agent earlier came here and said that it was a Class 5 road.
Right. But it is a, it is a pre-existing town road. Town never approved Pond Street. It never approved Heath Street. Because they existed prior to the process. Yeah.
I never believed that it was.
Yeah. No, in New Hampshire, you're either a town road or you're a private road. The town does not maintain private roads. That's actually, you're talking about the section next to the cemetery?
Yeah.
That's actually the east end of Bancroft Road. We don't, we don't maintain the section in the middle that was abandoned many years ago. But that is actually a town-approved road, or a town-accepted road.
Class 6 roads are non-maintained town roads.
Yeah.
But Courierville is a Class 5, which means the town does maintain it and plow it and grow.
Any other questions or comments? I apologize, I wasn't here last week. I do appreciate the additional information that was placed on the plans. Therefore, it's appropriate at this point to request a motion to approve. I did read, and it's a very good list, although the numbers have changed. I would look for a motion to approve the plan with the following conditions, and that is that a Mylar is provided with all appropriate stamps, that the bounds are set, that we provide delineation reports for lot 1-4 and 1-5, acquire all necessary state and federal permits, that's standard, that there is a note on the plan, that there will be sediment erosion control along the limit of work area, which I believe you said you already put on the plan, Mr. Quintel. So, if that's already on the plan, that doesn't need to be a condition of approval. And provide the $11,400 bond letter of credit for off-site improvements, and provide a $5,700 bond letter of credit to cover additional grading to the road if needs be.
You're making the motion?
No, that's, chairs never make motions. They just ask for them.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second for the motion? Okay, there's, oh, okay. Thank you. Discussion of the motion.
Yeah. One of the conditions you had was the delineation report.
Yeah.
And according to the letter he presented, he's already submitted that.
Right. That's why I said that that is not.
Oh, I didn't hear the part that said that wasn't on.
Yeah, he crossed it off.
Right.
We already have that.
Okay. Well, I didn't hear him. Okay. Fine.
Yes, see, they said that they submitted several copies of the delineation report.
Right here. They didn't have one, they didn't have one for everybody.
So, they just sort of put them out on the table. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Two, three, four.
Okay, hang on a minute.
Four in favor. Those opposed? Three.
Okay.
Since I'm filling in for Gail, I'll do the notice of decision on Thursday.
What was the count?
Four to three.
Four to three.
That case, I will declare the public hearing closed. If anybody doesn't want their paperwork... If anybody has their maps and they don't want them?
I have this, I have the new map and stuff for the file. That's, this is what this is for the file.
Well, that's, I just wanted to make sure Gail has enough for her filing.
Yes, that's what this is, right there.
Actually, Dennis, did you, I didn't see out back. Did you drop, drop off any large versions of the, these maps for? I need minimum of three. We need, well, yeah, we need, we need one for the file. The assessor prefers the large map.
I would make that one change.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I won't be here tomorrow. I'll be here Thursday.
Thursday's good.
I'll make sure there's enough. Not that far.
Okay. Item two, public hearing. Ground Care Landscaping LLC, Gregory Cunningham, manager, 185 South Main Street, block 14, sorry, map 14, block 1, lot 25. Minor non-residential site plan. We have declared the application complete? Okay.
I have a question on that. The, the list of abutters that was, that I saw did not include 141273, which borders the lot on the north side, the 50-foot-wide strip. Here's the, here's the tax assessors. The lot is here. Coleman's Land goes.
Roger, can you state the lot you're?
141273. What he just said.
Yeah.
That's interesting, because on the map, that's shown as being a right-of-way, not as a...
I know that when they came in before, they presented it as their property, not as a right-of-way. You know, when they were coming into the ball fields and things.
Yeah. That, that section belongs to Coleman and McCullough.
Right. A 50-foot section, which board, which board is this?
It used to go right through the Chevrolet dealership. And they needed it over, right with the gates on. And I didn't see that either.
In that case...
It's 49.8.
But, but, for this case, it doesn't matter. It's a matter of, it hasn't been, he hasn't been noticed.
Well, I was just going to say, in that case, the application, the application's complete, but the process for the public hearing is not.
The notice of the public meeting to determine whether it's complete is not been done.
The public, the public meeting, in the public meeting, we determine whether or not the application is complete or not.
And that has to be noticed.
No, the public meeting doesn't. The public hearing does.
The public meeting, the public meeting is noticed, is not...
I disagree, but we'll leave it there.
I had this discussion with Margaret Burns last year, is that the public meeting is noticed in the standard procedure. The public hearing has to be, because what I'm saying is that if you're, you're correct, and I can go out back and double-check the list, if they were not notified, we cannot stop the public hearing this evening. Would you, are you challenging the abutter notices? And I will go and...
Yeah, I, at least the information that I got, unless, I don't know, if the applicant can say that the, that he was noticed.
Right. You should have a list of who you sent it to, right?
That's what I...
That was the list that I, that was...
The abutters list lists 178 South Main Street, 176 South Main Street, 191 South Main Street, and 185 South Main Street. None of them are 125 Development Corp., who is the owner of 273. Do you happen to know your tax map and lot?
What?
Excuse me. If you're going to talk, you need to be up there to the... Whoops.
So, technically, abutters that need to be noticed are any property line touching this property and anybody directly across the street. Kitty corner does not count, so, just doesn't.
Right.
Can you state, come up and state what your address is?
121 South Main Street.
131?
Yeah.
131.
And your name?
I'm William Stewart, and my wife is Joanna, and I...
Is that, is that the other property that we're going to be talking about later? The next one on the agenda, is the abut for that one?
I don't know. I'm having a hard time hearing you, so I'm going to ask you to say that again.
There are two applications before you. This is for a landscaping business on this property.
Is he claiming to be...
Puzzle Lane is just on this side. This is Howard Lane. I want to make sure we're talking about the right application before too many questions.
I think he's talking about the other application.
Yeah.
The other application is also on South Main Street.
Oh, so there's more than one application?
Yes. I think, I think we're talking about two different applications.
Yeah, because we've only gotten two letters about anything.
What we're discussing presently is at 185 South Main Street.
Right next to Hafner's.
I was just talking about the letters.
Right. The, the other application that we have is for 141 South Main Street.
Oh, I'm new here. That might be the house down the street. Is that the 24-acre lot that just sold?
Yes. That's the application that's on after this one. It's okay. Just want to confirm.
No problem. Would you like me to go check the abutters list?
You can do that.
I'll be right back. Declare a minor recess.
So, we're going to take a few-minute recess.
For the car?
No. This was, uh, two guys work shop.
Oh, no, it's on you.
Oh, good. Good, right? So, so they have a...
Yep. I can't, I can't, I can't finish the copy. You can ask Barbara.
I don't know what. First 24 guys got CB radios. Next 24 guys got infected fluids, because it was all about working bench. And they get down to the last 24, and they start calling our number. My number was...
No, neither. Hang on.
One guy.
That's cool.
With the black and everything?
Oh, yeah. Screaming chicken on the front.
Yep. Yeah. Nope.
26-liter motor in it.
Oh, that's cool. I'm trying to find, he came before, and the plan was a lot better than this one that's in here. Messy. So, I was trying to find it. Well, this is something that Mr. Cunningham just asked if I could make him a copy. He said, for some reason, he doesn't have a copy in his file. Yeah, I know.
I did just check the abutters list, and 125 Development Corp. wasn't on.
I lost internet at home tonight.
You what?
I have no internet at home.
Oh, because of thunder and lightning?
Yeah.
They had a lightning strike on Kenwood.
Did they? Okay, that's the one. I live right next door to it.
I guess I heard the big boom.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't we have a better plan for this from some other meeting?
You have a large collection of...
His other plan was a lot better. But I can't find it.
Like to call the meeting back to order?
Yeah, that one.
I did just check the submitted abutters list, and 125 Development Corp. was not on the list. However, it is clear they are an abutter. Therefore, the remedy for this evening will be to open the public hearing and continue it to the next meeting citing the need to... Thank you.
So, Jim, just a small correction, but it's a technicality. You can declare whether the application is complete or not this evening. You can talk about general issues if you want as a board. You can't actually make a decision until lot 273 is properly noticed. You can't open the public hearing for public comment until that has happened.
That's right, yeah.
That said, my general take, minus the abutters notice, is this application is complete. I have a few questions and suggestions for making a better plan, but just so that the applicant knows this, and when they came as a preliminary, because of the season and the type of business, like everyone, you're under a time crunch. But just so that we can discuss concerns the board has so that they can be addressed, given that an abutter notice is...
All gotten out of the way, and then at the public hearing, possibly even approved by the end of the meeting.
Given that the, the abutter noticing is something that the planning board is actually responsible for checking, it seems like that would be...
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We, that's what, I thought we could do everything, but...
I'm going to advance all of that.
Okay.
I'm going to give my reason why. Because of the things that you, you and I know that have transpired in fact, and you were chairman of the board. You can't let that... You just as an excuse for anything in the future. It's better to be safe than sorry.
We can still... We can listen to the presentation. We can...
I'm just telling you how I feel about it.
And, I mean, this evening, if there are any abutters... Are there any existing abutters here? No. At the next meeting, any abutter that wishes to make comment during the public hearing can. However, we're talking tonight in generalities.
And if I was chairman of the board, you know where I'm talking about.
I'm not worried about that person.
So one thing I can offer is I can offer my comments, and that may get any of the board members' comments as well?
Actually, that's probably a very good idea.
Okay.
So my suggestion is to let the applicant present what you're looking to do on this site, just in general. I will... I can give my little bit of feedback as suggestions. The board could certainly ask questions if you want to. That's up to board members. But you can't approve this tonight.
That we know. That's distinct.
I don't think we can even make a decision on whether to take jurisdiction.
No.
But we could discuss it in terms of, like we did the last time, if a...
On binding consultation.
Tonight would be the presentation. Ms. Rowan would present her questions or concerns. Board members could add general comments. And at the next meeting, we will have the public hearing, prior to which we would take jurisdiction.
Jim, wouldn't we have to have another presentation?
No, we don't have to have the...
If an abutter is not here tonight...
It would be good to do a summary.
You could do a second presentation before we take any jurisdiction.
He can, but I honestly don't think we could force them, because this is videotaped, and it is available to the public as a video. Therefore, any abutter who had dire concerns would be able to watch the video prior to the next meeting.
I would still recommend at least a general presentation.
We haven't told this one abutter that anything is even going on.
Right.
So for him to not know that we had this meeting before, I think he'd have to have the presentation twice. If you want to see it tonight, that's great, but if the abutter is here at the next meeting, we have to have the presentation again.
Yes. I agree with that.
I think it should be presented tonight, maybe in an abridged version, so that people then understand better what Ms. Rowan's comments are.
Okay, sure.
Because, I mean, this is a very small project.
Very small.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. So just to be clear, obviously, as I understand, no decisions can be made tonight, but how long do I have to wait for the next opportunity? Are we... Force another month, or what's...
November 13th.
I don't have the schedule.
I believe it's November 13th.
Okay, November 13th.
Is the next meeting that they could make a decision, having properly noticed the one abutter that wasn't noticed.
Voting.
Okay. And it's... And just so I understand, it's my office... Excuse me, has been helping me with this, and they kind of dealt with the letters out to the abutters. It's not a mistake that we made, correct? It's something... We weren't notified that that person had to be notified? Is that essentially what happened, or...
It's a person on the list who fell through the cracks, if you will. I don't know why our administrative assistant didn't catch it, though. On the plan, it's listed as being... That piece of property is listed as being a right-of-way, actually a potential street. And since it wasn't built, that will be corrected when I chat with her.
Okay. So it wasn't something that we did?
No, that...
So we can... I mean, the first time we're going through this process, I want to make sure we're learning from what we're doing here.
I mean, it was omitted from your list. It should have been on your list, but our administrative assistant didn't catch it.
We should have caught it, too, but since it's listed as a right-of-way, that's an easy thing to miss.
Right.
Should have known when I turned down World Series tickets that something was going to go wrong. I got a call that said, "I got tickets in a box. Do you want to go?" And I said, "I have a meeting."
Oh, wow.
Now I should have gone, but it's all right. Here we are. I don't know. I think they're still playing right now, but... Anyways, so what I did, I guess the biggest thing here, if we're going to kind of keep this brief, because we might have to do this again, is in talking to Jennifer here, I decided that it's best to take the salt out of the equation. I agree with everything that she was saying as far as what was necessary to provide the proper coverage for the salt. And at that point, it would get far too expensive. We'd almost have to build a building to make the process seamless, right? Load the trucks inside a covered area. So, you know, we've made arrangements. We kind of took that off, and as I told her in our conversation, the aquifer is more important to me than anything, you know? And when we first presented last time, we understood a little bit more about that, and so it wasn't worth it for us to challenge any of that. So we're happy to take that off at that point. You know, the minor changes that I made were that I kind of just made it into two areas to make it a little bit easier to understand. The bins in the back here are pretty similar to what we were going to do before. I also talked to the... I was mentioning that I should talk to the building department just to see if there's any permits we needed to build in order to stack the blocks and do what we're doing. I spoke with him last Thursday, and he said there's no reason for it. You're perfectly fine doing what you're doing. You don't need any permits. So I clarified that with him. And then I just kind of separated into kind of an equipment parking area, and then vehicles and equipment parking area to the right. And that's more like the active day-to-day. So we have, you know, trucks that we use, but we also have trailers that we don't use every single day. So they kind of get... They... And maybe some of the snow equipment would kind of get stored in that area to the left, which is... Currently has the Jersey barriers around it, and I think they've been there for a while now. I would just kind of extend those out a little bit more. And I kind of added the square footage in here somewhere, I believe. Yep, right there. Extend them out so it's more of an even distribution of the area, I guess is the best way to put it. That doesn't impede on any of the entrances for the property either. So... And then the area to the right, I just have two storage containers in the back. It allows us to have, obviously, some additional storage. But it also, in our industry, unfortunately, when you have enclosed trailers and $80,000 worth of stuff in it, people like to try to break into it, and locks don't always work. So we find that when we back our trucks and trailers up to something solid, that nobody can access the trailer at that point without having to move the truck. And that's really the main purpose for it, but we could use blocks if that was something, you know, that needed to be done. But using the storage containers allows us to get that barrier to back up to and put stuff in the containers for storage. So that's why I kind of just put those there.
Is that on this plan?
No, it's... This plan was submitted...
The original plan?
A week... No, a week or two ago.
Oh, I didn't see that.
It was definitely over 10 days ago.
It's on the back.
It's on the back of the one with the writing.
That one didn't get mailed to us.
I don't have it.
That's the piece that I saw in the email, but it wasn't...
All it is is this.
Okay.
I'm like, this doesn't tell you much.
No.
Before you leave this evening, you will have a copy of it to take with you. It was one of... By the way, it was a separate sheet of paper, not stapled to the packet.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the back of what? To whom it may concern? It's just not stapled.
Yeah.
To whom it may concern? Oh, it's in the back of that one.
Mr. Zott has his copy.
I wrote a little letter with some of the changes and stuff, just so if, when you're reading it before, it was easier for you to take a look at it.
It's the same as this.
And then I just wanted to add a gate to that area, the area that currently has the Jersey barriers around it. I just wanted to add a gate, because currently, you know, we want something where the guys can access, you know, in and out, universal through a gate, so...
So the wall will be all Jersey barriers, and then there'll be a gate to get through?
Yes, so currently, I'll hold up the map here. So what we would build for the storage bins, which is, again, no longer salt, it's just all the organic material from mulch to stone to dirt, would be along the back wall here with some small walls coming out to contain and separate the stuff. Around here is currently Jersey barriers that are spaced out.
Right.
And what I would do is extend it this way a little bit, which is already shown in here, and then stop at one point, put two gates, and then continue it to where it currently is, essentially. And that's kind of the changes. One of the things we had in one of the original plans was the pots that we were going to put along the road, because we don't know, you know, things have come up, and, you know, additional costs here, trying to get this figured out properly. We kind of took that off the plate for now, but what the property does have is it has little islands along the main road that go into the parking lot. So we just thought, all right, once we kind of get everything squared away, plus this time of the year and the season, we wouldn't be able to do anything with the pots anyway, we would just kind of enhance those, you know, to help out the property as opposed to putting potters up, and just made it simple that way.
Ms. Rowan.
So just a general comment is I think that the detail that is shown on this plan, as far as where things on the site are going to go, are fine. I think it complies with your minor site plan. My one concern, though, is with some of your minor site plans, is that I simply think it needs to go on to the existing site plan for that lot. This is sort of a blown-up version of it when they came in for their preliminary, so this is the version I'm speaking to. I think that detail on this larger blown... Just so you can see things like the setbacks, the abutters, any structures within 100 feet. It already shows all of that requirement, but I think having this put on to this more detailed plan actually would accomplish 90% of what should be on there. My other... It was actually more of a question was hours of operation?
Generally, we're seven to five during the week when it comes to a snowstorm. We're kind of at the mercy of snow, but most of our operations, snow-wise, is kind of based on the sites that we're on. Any of our equipment, bigger equipment, all that stuff is already placed. None of it's coming out of there. The only thing that would be coming out is trucks, and probably 98% of our vehicles are gas vehicles, so they're quiet. You know, we prefer gas because they always start, no matter how cold it is. So it wouldn't be any more... Because we're not loading salt or anything like that at night, it wouldn't be more than probably your average traffic driving by as far as noise goes. And then once... What happens is, the staff will get there, they'll get into their work vehicle, and then they're gone the entire storm. And then they come back, you know, when the storm's over. And on average, you know, you probably have 15 storms a winter, so... But outside of that, we're typically... They might come in... All my staff has volunteer weekends. If they want to work a Saturday and make some extra money for their family, they can, but we don't... We typically don't work Saturdays.
That might be something that the board may want to think about, whether you would want that noted on the plan. I mean, just from here, that doesn't seem unreasonable, whether you would want it noted or as a condition of approval when we get... If and when we get to that stage, just something to consider. And the other comment about the brush that you said, the small amount of brush that might be easier in your letter to store on-site?
Yeah, that was, again, one of those, you know, if it's okay, great. If it's not, you know, it's fine. Our trucks hold a smaller amount of material than what we usually send off, so it's much more cost-efficient for the guys to come back. And we're talking if downed branches or something like that get cut up on-site, what we have been doing in our old location is stockpiling for a short period of time, then we have a company that comes in, and we load them up, and they take it all away. It's just easier for us, because they can come back to the shop empty, you know, in the bin, and then their day's over, as opposed to running to the site and dumping it there and going through the whole process. And it's, again, when we load a bigger truck, it becomes more cost-effective than dumping a whole bunch of small trucks.
Are these bins right at the property line? They're a set back.
They're right at the... There's a tree line, so I have... There should be off the property line for sure, because the property goes over and then starts dropping down to the tree line.
I'd like to see that on, you know, at least some kind of a measurement of what that is on...
That would be accomplished by Jennifer's recommendation to put it on the bigger plan.
Right, what the setback is from the property line, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm curious. So you plow in the wintertime?
Yes, sir.
Are your plow trucks equipped with Sanders?
Yes.
So you'll be bringing those Sanders back onto the property?
We would. They'd be back to the park. However, they're fully enclosed. So any salt that goes in it, and, you know, I can't outlaw a little bit of salt spilling outside of it, minor, probably no comparison to what... I assume they salt that main road, or they don't?
They do.
It'd be no comparison to what they put on that main road, I promise you that.
Yeah, I fully agree.
Yeah, we use the plastic poly Fisher Sanders, if you're familiar with them at all, and I buy them because they have the plastic covers to keep everything dry, because once the salt gets wet, it's very hard to distribute. And then the spinners in the back cover it as well. So very minimal, and much less than what would be put on the road up front, for sure.
So my comment about the brush is that if and when we get to any approvals, that you could put a condition on the plan that says they could... It can only... Brush can only be stored within these bins specifically, so you're not going to get sort of stockpiles of things.
A blown fire.
Exactly.
That actually was something that ran through my mind, is why...
Yes. I have a suggestion that when you do come back for the final, that you... When you do your... Put for your hours, that you might want to include Saturdays, because that way you have the option to work in on Saturdays if you want to or not, if you do like Monday through Saturday.
So so far, we just got to take this plan and put it on the bigger paper, and then add some hours of operation for the next one.
And do a measurement from the property line to where the back of your bins are going to be.
Correct.
And on the side, too.
And the side, yeah.
Sure. We can adjust those.
There should be a scale on the larger version of this. Just use that scale of how far 15 feet is, or whatever, though.
Yep.
Provided that... Don't use the measured scale. Use the actual little black-and-white checks so that you know your distances are correct.
Yeah, one of the things I usually do is I'll write in the numbers anyway, just in case my scales off. I got the numbers there that say, you know, quite like 15 feet away, or whatever it is.
I'm just saying, whatever document you work on may not be...
Especially when you blow it up.
Original, so the scale may be off.
Yeah, and that's what I anticipated when we blew up this section here, so I added all the measurements and the square footage and everything, because I can't promise that'll be exact, because I don't know which copy I'm getting.
Are there any other questions?
I've got a question for Ms. Rowan.
Yes.
Our zoning... This lot is zoned commercial.
Correct.
Our zoning ordinance says that a commercial lot has to be 60,000 square feet.
It's an existing lot of record. It is a non-conforming lot.
And I was going to say, in the other piece, it is clearly limited that this is a commercial lot.
This is a existing, non-conforming lot due to size and dimension, so it is allowed to still be utilized in this fashion. But otherwise, you're absolutely correct. If it was a completely blank slate, that's what it would have to...
Yeah, I figured there had to be something to it, but I-
That's why.
It would be limited to what you could put on it because of the size.
Okay.
I will say, just given where, this lot is already covered by more impervious surface than it would normally be allowed to in this area, but it's an existing lot, almost 100% covered with impervious surface. They're not changing that aspect, so in that regard, it's non-conforming.
Good.
There's not, again, one of the, trying to have as little impact as possible on all of this, you know, so the bins sit on top of the already gravel that's there and probably two containers sit on top of the gravel that's there, and all of them can be removed in the future and all that, so it's not, we're not digging, we're not leveling, we're not any of that stuff, we're not changing anything, we're just kind of, you know, placing a couple of things on top.
The one last thing that I had is that, and I did actually speak with him about the, a DOT driveway permit or an amended permit if necessary. That would be a normal condition for you guys to have any state permit. They may not need to do anything, and DOT stating as such in an email would be sufficient to accommodate that, but they may need to do something with the driveway, or DOT may request it be put in a certain part of the lot. It's sort of a big open space right now, so.
So after I spoke with you about that, the same day, we contacted them, we got the application, we sent it in, so we're just kind of waiting for, you know, whenever they come back with us. And like you said, they weren't sure whether we needed something or didn't need something. In fact, we didn't even know how to figure out which pole number they were because there's so many numbers on each pole. So we just took pictures of the pole and said, you know, this many feet from this pole, so hopefully they can, you know, figure it out with them. But we did already begin that, and I did not know about that until I was told.
I was just thinking, too, it's kind of difficult because you have a little, you have the building, you have a little piece of the land, then you have the right-of-way that goes to the back, and then you have your piece of land over here. So they have to make sure the driveway isn't within the right-of-way, right? Or can they, like either that side or that side, or can they do their driveway in that right-of-way?
The driveway can be in the state's right-of-way, but it can't be in, what is the 27-3 lots' right-of-way? It has to come off of their frontage on there, on the state road.
Is there a driveway there now?
Yeah, there's-
Is there a permitted driveway? Let's put it that way.
Well, and that's one of the things DOT would look at.
It's an access road.
We're not sure.
We're not, and that, again, that's something DOT will consider. It's a state road. You know, maybe it was in one portion, but right now, it's just a big open asphalt parking lot.
They have submitted a-
We're good. And there's two openings there on that section. There's that right-of-way, I guess, road, and then before that, to the left, is another similar size width. And we gave them all the dimensions when we submitted the DOT.
Hopefully this will tidy it up.
Right.
The one question I had at some point, and I don't know whether or not, where I got this in my head, that you were going to, this was not just your own supplies, but you were opening it up for sales?
No, one thing I asked in the last meeting was, is this, if it was an easier process, you know, then I'd throw it out there to see if it was an asset to the area. However, after talking to Jennifer, there was a lot more to the process than I wanted to get into, and I said, well, I don't need to do it. I just thought it might be an asset to the area. Let's just keep it simple at this point and try and keep it easy.
The other reason I brought that up is when you were discussing your hours of operation, you know, if you were doing retail, Saturday and Sunday would be really important days because that's-
Yeah, I agree. Yeah? Yeah, I brought it up briefly, but, you know, I didn't want to disturb the-
So retail certainly is allowed. It just brings into things like having parking for customers and light-in, so I don't want it to sound like I said that that was not an allowed use. It is.
Oh, yeah, she said I could do it. She just told me kind of what the process was, and I said, no, thank you. Let's keep it easy.
I was just thinking about the containers, because I know in previous commercial properties, we've had problems with how many containers and trailers and stuff are stored and what they do with them. So I didn't know if there's a certain amount we should let or if there's a certain rule that we go by to figure out containers.
It would probably be nice to see on the plan, location for and a specific number of trailers as opposed to-
So moving trailers or containers?
Whatever it is you were going to back the trucks up to.
Storage, use for storage.
Regrettably, for some people, trailers and-
Containers might be saying-
The containers are made out of cinder blocks, however, not cinder blocks.
No, no, I'm sorry. The containers are storage containers, so they're like the overseas metal storage containers.
Right.
So that's what we're talking about.
For a lot of people, those and tractor-trailer boxes-
Are the same.
-are interchangeable.
Understood, understood. Two, I don't want to put more than two there, you know, and I can put that in the plan. It's just easier for that way. We don't have too many enclosed trailers, which is what we need to back them up to. Some of the other ones are open trailers that are similar to dump bodies, so two should be perfectly fine, you know, for us. And again, we can back them up to cinder blocks. It's just a little bit more convenient to have the storage container.
You just need to show where those containers are going to be on the plan, that's all.
Yeah, I did show it here in storage containers, but I didn't put how many because I wasn't sure if it would be limited or not limited. And obviously, if you're not limited in anything, you don't want to put a limit on it, but if you guys would like to put a limit, then I'm willing to work with it.
Right.
I mean, as proposed, this shows where they're going to be located. You could certainly have a condition or a note be added that only up to two can be there or whatever the number may be.
Right. Anything further?
Well, I didn't know if it's, we're talking about the minor site plan for the other side lot, but, so it doesn't contain like where his office is? We're not talking about that.
Right, that's actually a different lot.
That's different.
Are we discussing the signage?
So the signage specifically, the restriction in your zoning for commercial is that it can be 32 square feet. You can have up to 100 square feet in either side of the sign of signage, but the maximum size of a sign is 32 square feet.
Okay.
And it looked, just from the dimensions you gave, that you fit in with that.
Okay. Yeah, she had mentioned that I should bring that up to the meeting and so I-
Well, Section B of our sign regulation states that street address numbers shall be clearly marked in the name and development included in the design of the front facade or signage of individual buildings. So I would think you'd need to put your street address on this sign. This is going to be facing forward, I assume.
Right.
Yes.
I believe the building-
The building does have addresses on it.
In the center part actually has its address.
Okay, all right. Just that our regulations state, this sign should have that. That's what it-
I honestly believe that that's people assuming that you have one business, one building. However, that is a multi-use building. And quite honestly, I would have looked at him and said, you take your plan to the building department, and unless they, you know, if they have some objection and need clarification, bring it back here.
I haven't noticed any signs with too many addresses on them. I'm sure there are some who need to delineate that, right, if they're not on the building that has it, so, I mean, again, it's-
Now, has your, where your office has been designated by, like, Unit A?
Yeah, A, B, C, I think, is how they break up the building.
Is it A on that end?
That's C.
That's C.
Okay. Probably someplace on that, the corner of the building, just more for, I'm thinking, the fire department.
They do have them on the building broken up.
Oh, okay.
Correct, yeah.
So that, if an alarm goes off and it's C, they don't have to go down there and hope that they notice where the source of smoke is?
Sure, yeah. Let's pray none of that happens ever.
Anything further? In that case, I will see to it that the notice is sent out and at the, we will have the public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay, just to clarify, so for me, the details are to put this on the other plan as best I can with the measurements and I'll obviously write in the stuff. Make sure it's pulled away from the property lines. A certain amount of feet I need to be away from said property line?
I didn't look at what the regulations are for setbacks in the commercials on-
It's actually not technically a structure.
Yeah, but if it's shared as a structure, that's 25 feet.
Give me just a second.
Again, the building department said there were no restrictions, and maybe we didn't get too far into the conversation, but I can revisit that with them if they're the ones.
We have a 25-foot setback, now we can debate whether or not they're structures or not.
Right.
However, that, once again, that is making a decision, and we would have to have that, do that after the public hearing.
It's 25 feet.
Go 25 feet?
Yeah.
No problem. Is there, because of that, and I have to find out the exact property line, if I were to shift these over to here, am I stirring the pot and have, you know, kind of having to go to a couple more meetings, or is it something that could easily still be maybe past next meeting?
It would be, assuming it's not in the front setback, which is 50 feet.
Yeah.
It would be compliant with your zoning and site plan to shift it.
Yeah, I mean, I could, if this is a wood line here, I could put it there or there. I just don't know exactly where that 25 feet is going to fall. If it's going to fall more in the middle, I'd rather see if, you know, because right here is all property, so I could put it right on that line of what I'm trying to separate.
Over here, okay.
But my goal is, as Jennifer said, given kind of what we do, our timelines are fairly limited and being extended already, I don't want to go any further.
Then you'd be facing setback from the road.
Right, that's why I said it can't be 50 feet to the front.
Exactly.
Assuming it's not in that setback, then actually just shifting the orientation itself, I don't think would be compatible.
Yeah, as long as you're within those setbacks, you can orient it any way you want.
Okay, and that's 50 feet from the edge of the actual road.
It's 50 feet from the-
65 feet from the center line of the road.
65?
65 feet from the center line of the road.
It's easy to-
Yeah.
But, yeah, in looking at this lot, it is-
It is a strangely configured lot.
Right.
I agree with all of you.
Very good. Anything further? Anything further?
Nope. It sounds like I've got a simple job to do unless I'm missing something, but again, my goal is to try to come up with some sort of a solution here by the next meeting since obviously this is going to the 13th now. So if there's anything you guys can give me that helps me get to that point now, I'd love to-
Just make sure that your drawings or anything you want to submit come in by Thursday prior, actually by Wednesday prior to the, which is the 7th.
Okay.
Well, that way they can go out and the board pack it. Because if you walk in on that night and say, oh, yeah, here are my new drawings.
My plan is to have it to you this week unless something goes crazy.
The office will be open Thursday and again on Monday.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to have a motion to continue this?
No.
Yes, you do.
There's no public hearing.
But you've noticed some people, so you should continue it.
Yeah, okay.
I motion to continue this to November 13th.
Thank you. Second, Sandy Esterbrook. All those in favor?
All right.
That's your names. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item three, public hearing for Albert Trudell, SCC Realty Trust LLC, eight lots of division at 141 South Main Street. That's map 14, block one, lot four.
Good evening. Does everybody have results? How are you?
Good.
I have 11 by 17s and a full-size plan.
We'll take the full-size plan.
Yeah.
All right. We'll look at it.
Look at it now?
No, I don't want to look at it now.
Yes, I haven't made any changes from the original. Anybody else?
When is that? Does this contain changes?
No.
All right, I'll take one more.
Thank you.
Everybody else in the class? Okay.
Okay, prior to opening the public hearing, I will-
Is that a decent spot for the presentation board?
Excuse me?
Any particular place for the presentation board?
Actually, the camera's more likely to be able to see it there than on the other side of here.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, prior to the opening the public hearing, can we have a motion declaring the application complete?
Did Jennifer write up any comments? I did not. I'm here.
Okay, well, do you have anything to tell us about the completeness of the-
Completeness of the plan.
Let him give his presentation first, is my suggestion at this point.
Okay.
In that case, Mrs. Zilch, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening. It's been a while since I've been here. Nice to be back. Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates, here on behalf of the owner, applicant, Terry Trudell of SCC Realty Trust LLC for his proposed subdivision of tax parcel 14-1-4, located at 141 South Main Street. I've prepared a brief presentation. I'll just kind of run through it. I'll kind of go through all of it, but at any one point, if you have a question, just interrupt me and just ask the question, feel free. So basically, kind of starting with sheet one, the property is located on the west side of South Main Street across from Wentworth Drive. It abuts Pheasant Crossing on the south end and abuts a right-of-way off of Walnut Farm on the west side of the property. If you direct your attention to sheet two, that's the existing conditions plan. I'll kind of run through that for you. So as you can see on the existing conditions plan, this is a 24.59 acre site with just over 1,200 feet of frontage on South Main Street and about an additional 147 feet of frontage on Pheasant Crossing that I just mentioned. Situated on the site is an existing single-family dwelling, last occupied by the Owen family, and several outbuildings. This dwelling is served by its own individual onsite well and onsite septic system, also served by its own individual driveway directly across from Wentworth Drive, so everybody can see where all that is. There's several wetlands on the property as identified by our wetland scientist, Timothy Fuerta. The most significant of the wetlands are two independent runs that come in from the north side of the property. One run runs along, basically along the frontage, and then the other runs pretty much through the middle of the property. They eventually both converge at Pheasant Crossing where they empty through Cross Culvert under Pheasant Crossing, so everybody see where that is. Okay. The remainder of the property is predominantly wooded, site consisting of large contiguous areas of well-drained upland soils with flat to moderate slopes throughout. So basically, two wet runs in the front of it, a little bit of a wetland pocket out in the back, and then you get two really substantial contiguous upland areas on the site. Any questions on the existing conditions and where we're at? Okay, if I could direct your attention to sheet three. Our proposal is pretty basic, is what we're going to do is raise the existing dwelling and all of the outbuildings, raise or remove, all of which have been neglected. There's really nothing worth saving there, so they're all going to come down. And then subdivide the property into eight single-family residential building lots. Each of the proposed lots will be supported by the frontage along South Main Street and are sized to meet and exceed all local and state lot sizing requirements. Should also be noted that the frontage on the southernmost lot supports the remaining 12 and 1/2 acres. So you basically have seven smaller lots ranging in acre and a half up to a couple acres, starting on the north end all the way down to the southern end of the property. Then the last 150 feet of frontage supports the remaining big back lot of land, which you can see on the very next sheet. It's about 12 and 1/2 acres. Additionally, and actually, you might want to turn your attention to sheet five, which has the topography on it as well. So you can see for each one of the lots, there's generous buildable area has been provided for each of them. All lots will be, proposed lots will be supported by individual onsite septic systems and wells. You can see on each one of the lots, we have a 4,000-square receiving area, a potential well location, all of our test pits, everything meets and exceeds all your siting requirements for setbacks from wetlands, property lines and such. As noted by New Hampshire DOT District Six, four driveway access points will be allowed on this state road and no more, basically meaning that we're going to have shared driveways for this site, four shared driveways for eight proposed lots. State limits you by frontage. We're at the maximum that's allowed by the amount of frontage afforded on South Main. So as you can see, we're proposing the four driveways to be shared by two lots each. All drives meet the site distance requirements, and an application has been submitted to DOT and is currently under review. Continuing with the driveways, as noted, there is a wetland run across the frontage of the property. In order to access the buildable portion of these lots, there's unavoidable wetlands that have to be impacted by this proposal. In addition, the longer driveway serving the back lot, that impacts the middle run of the wetland at a point where there's an existing woods road. So basically, the first three driveways, the two proposed shared driveways, the existing driveway that's going to be shared driveway, those all impact the wetland run- driveway that's going to be shared driveway, those all impact the wetland run along the frontage. And then the last driveway impacts wetland at the frontage as well as the middle run in the back of it. Everybody kind of follow along with that? Okay, any questions thus far? Okay, so moving along, in designing the crossings, we enlisted the help of Jim Hanley from Civil Design Consultants. Jim's crossing designs for each one of these driveways consider existing and proposed stormwater flows as well as animal migration, and he incorporates all the proper construction and stabilization required to ensure no additional impacts occur. The project plans that Jim put together, included in this plan set include individual driveway profiles as well as cross-sections and all details relating to the crossings. Those are all added into the plan sets from sheet seven all the way to 13. You'll see various details of all these different crossings, all the driveways, everything's been graded and really well detailed, so we know exact impacts here and how much disturbance these will require. So when all, wetland impact has been kept to a minimum of about 5245 square feet for all impacts, not a great deal of wetland impact considering the crossings. Like I said, we did as best we could to try and keep the crossings at their narrowest points possible. We kept crossings where there are already impacts with the existing driveway and with the woods road, things like that, whatever trick we could to keep the wetland impact down. So in total, we're about 5,200 square feet of wetland impact for the proposal. As obviously, we have a DES wetlands permit that we've applied for, that's been submitted and is currently under their review as well as the local conservation commission. So that's one of the other state approvals on this. In addition to the wetlands in the driveway permit, I should note that we also have a state subdivision approval that's also been submitted and that's currently under review. I think I've already got some feedback from that and they're pretty much all set with the plan set, just waiting on the dredge and fill permit. They won't approve subdivision until the dredge and fill permit comes in. The dredge and fill permit typically takes much longer, so. With the application, there's no waivers that I'm aware of. It meets all your zoning requirements, there's no variances required. We're proposing to sprinkler the houses. We've got thus far just a few comments, some from the fire chief. I don't know if conservation had submitted anything, and I did have just a couple of comments from your engineer, Mike McNally, I just received that yesterday. So I haven't made any changes to these plans, this is pretty much what we had submitted approximately a month ago. Any questions?
What size is the pipe that you're using for your crossings?
Most of them are 36-inch. And the reason they're larger culverts is we do have an occurrence of landing turtles, not particularly on the site, but within the area. And so one of the things that we had done with Fish and Game last time around when there was pretty much a similar site like this, is we overdesigned the culvert so that they actually were embedded into the stream bottom and a natural bottom will be created in the bottom of the culvert. And that, I guess that enhances travel through the culverts of the, you know, the landing turtles and other species that might be concerned with here. So they're a bit oversized for two reasons, obviously so we don't backwater anything here, so for animal migration as well. There are a couple other different sized pipes on here, but they're for different locations, but for the most part, it's a 36-inch pipe.
With a 36-inch pipe, that's great for wildlife, don't you have to worry about children getting in there?
A 36-inch pipe?
I mean, that's three feet across. That's, isn't it?
Yeah, it's three feet in diameter.
Oh, three feet this way, not three feet.
In diameter.
In diameter, yeah.
Yeah.
Three feet all around.
It's a big culvert.
Okay.
Right, they're overdesigned, they're not designed, I mean, if you go with a smaller pipe, Charles could still fit through a 24-inch pipe or even smaller, but at least with a 36-inch pipe, you won't have the water coming all the way up to the top, so there'll always be space above. Smaller pipe, it might actually fill the entire pipe and that could be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Charlie, have you had any calculations on where you're going to be putting in the four driveways and stuff like that?
Yes.
The wetlands area. Have you done any calculations on what the increase in flow is going to be down through Pheasant Lane?
Well, that was the comment from your engineer. I guess I was unaware that there's been issues with that culvert under Pheasant Lane. Mike made a pretty good comment about it. I talked with Jim Hanley, my design engineer today, about it, and he said it's something that, well, you know, we've got to address it, he'll take a look at it. He doesn't really know what impact this has on any flooding issues that they had there before, but he certainly considers that in his design criteria. If there's an issue now where it already floods, it didn't show up in his design calculations, so. Right, and so that's, yeah, that's my understanding. And like I said, I just got that comment letter, so this is something, I know Jim has worked with Mike on these things before. Well, there's a multitude of ways you could do things. I mean, obviously, one of the easiest changes, you make a bigger culvert under Pheasant Lane, but then what's your impact downstream if you open it up like that? So that's one thing that's always a difficult decision. And then there's other things that you could do, you could create some stormwater areas onsite to slow down water flow, stormwater flows, and so that there isn't a surge charge at that pipe. I've seen that successfully done with new housing where you do perhaps infiltration basins for all the roof drain. You've got really well-drained soils out here, those lots could support something like that. Other things I've seen is people incorporate rain gardens, and that's another good way to slow the water down.
Something that's really going to have to be done, because if you do, if this project goes through, we definitely are going to, every storm will probably flood in that area, believe me, it's uncertain. And my second question is, most naturally you did a type of search on this, right?
Yes.
Okay, what happened to the right-of-way to that, that parcel land?
From Walnut Farm?
Yeah.
It's still, it exists, there is a right-of-way off the end of Walnut Farm to the back of this property. Okay.
That subdivision that's in the back.
Okay.
And that individual wanted to go in there and he couldn't widen the road, so we didn't grant it when I was on the VBA. He tried to get a driveway through there.
Where did he want to put the driveway through?
It was down by her place.
Okay. All right, there's nothing that I saw in the deeds, I'm not the land surveyor, I rely on my guy in the office to do that, I'll double-check with him.
Just check on that, so there isn't a future problem.
All right, I did read the deeds, one of the last deeds, and I didn't see anything about a right-of-way or any obligation for it, okay. And that was from 108 all the way to the?
To the back parcel that's all developed now.
Okay.
Are you saying there's a right-of-way from 108 to Walnut Farm?
Or just to the property, not to the roadway?
Just to the property line, not to where the road is.
That's your understanding, Charlie?
Yeah.
It's just to the property line, okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Ms. Rowan?
Just, of the shared driveways, what is the length of the longest that goes to the back?
To the buildable area from 108 to the buildable area? You're looking over, a little over 600 feet, maybe 625 to 650, to where we provided the test pit in a viable area for a house.
It looks like the fire chief wants you to widen that, right? That driveway?
We're open for suggestions. Is there an issue with the length of the driveway?
Well, yeah, they're going to be able to get fire trucks up in there.
Okay.
So in reviewing this plan, I did not find anything that was incomplete or missing. I do think that Mike McNally's comment about the flooding with Pheasant Lane and doing the impact from the stormwater drainage is something that you should definitely investigate more and get some more feedback from the applicant on.
Sure.
And get Mike's.
Did it have stormwater calculations?
It did have a drainage plan that was submitted, yes. There is nothing in your subdivision regulations that have a maximum length a driveway can be. There is, and so my concern is the long driveway, and specifically actually the fire chief's concern as well of how is a fire truck going to get back there and able to turn around? It's a long driveway. My other concern is actually the driveway that is at the existing intersection and it's where the existing driveway currently is for the single-family home, so it is allowed to continue under DOT rules. That's a bad place to have a driveway, in general. That is not something I am qualified to evaluate, but it's something that you should request, Mike, also take a look at. It is a state-permitted driveway that would have to take place, but you can also have comments about some of the placement and whether or not that makes sense to have a shared driveway go to those lots, or if there are too many lots as a possibility. Again, I think the application actually is complete, I think it meets the requirements, I think Charlie's correct, you don't need any variances, you don't need any waiver requests that haven't been submitted. Those are the only, those are the main issues with this site that I could find.
Jen, could I ask a question about that? And the reason I made these all shared driveways, two lots each, I don't recognize there's any restriction in your ordinances that says you can't have three houses off of one lot or one driveway? I'm not sure.
There is not.
There is not, so I mean, one of the things we could consider is sharing off the southerly most driveway and just making that existing driveway just serve the one-house lot to reduce impact there. I don't know if that's something that would, the board would consider. It's a fairly easy change and I think the state would go along with it as well.
Would you say that again, because I didn't catch that?
Basically, and I'll kind of demonstrate here. Instead of having this driveway coming off to service this lot, just come in off of this one, and make this driveway serve the three lots, the two, the side lots.
Okay.
And then that'll reduce traffic coming in and out of that driveway, just the one-house lot, as it always has been.
Right.
Almost, with the thing that long, is there some way they could sort of make that a road? With a cul-de-sac to turn around at the other end to address the fire chief's issues?
I mean, having an ability for the fire trucks to be able to turn around is certainly something that you can require. I would not say a driveway should be built to town roads standards.
Well, I know there's things that we could do.
A private road, not a?
Your private roads have to be built to town standards.
Right.
So.
This can be a driveway, it is not going to have the tonnage of traffic on it that a roadway would have. I like the idea of it having, serving the third house, because that justifies the encumbrance on the land for having to have the driveway there. Like Mr. Hamel, I would like to see some sort of language that would require on those two and possibly on the, well, it's kind of in the center between 4-4 and 4-3, it would be nice if that was redrawn so that you could, at that junction, square it out a little so that somebody could back a fire truck. Because you have to remember that for a lot of these things, a house out in back, whether or not it's based on oil heat or propane, you're going to have a delivery truck that needs to be able to go up there, service it and come back out. And with that little S-curve in the middle.
Well, I guess my suggestion is this, if I may, I can take a look at NFPA standards for driveways, for long driveways like this. If there's a call for turnout, I could design something that would meet that. I would gladly meet with the fire chief, sit down and make sure this meets his requirements. We could look at gravel requirements to make sure it would support a vehicle if he should have the need to get out there. I mean, there's a few things that we could do to probably address the issue. Like I said, the homes are going to be sprinkled, that doesn't excuse the need for any sort of emergency service, it only diminishes it, but I understand your concerns and I think there's something we could work with here. The, with the driveway traverses across the lot right now, it's relatively flat. Fortunately, there's no severe terrain that it's running across. If you look at the topography there, it's really flat, it's a woods road that runs through there now. So we're just basically chasing that same route, but like I said, there's things we can incorporate that I think can improve upon what we're proposing.
Very good.
I just have a comment on that long driveway also. The way it is situated here, it runs along the property line of the six and seven lot and then it doesn't even serve the sixth lot. So you're asking a person to, you know, have a right-of-way on their property and the driveway doesn't even service them.
That might change.
So, yeah, you move it the other way, so.
One of the things that we'll be providing to the board as we've progressed with this is we'll be asking our attorney to draft up easements, language for the homeowners, you know, expressly talking about the shared maintenance requirements for the driveways, things like that. Last thing I want is neighbors coming to here fighting and bringing the board into it. This is something I want to get, you know, completely above-board, recorded with the plans, with their deeds, that spells out every facet of the shared driveway, ownership and maintenance.
Because there is a requirement that says for a shared driveway, it has to be on the mile I recorded copy in, there is some verbiage that the town is not held responsible.
DOT is going to be looking for that language as well, they've already talked to me about that, they're going to want to see the driveway easements shown as meets and bounds with the areas, they're going to want to see the driveway documents, not really as a homeowners' association, but it kind of is in effect when it comes to the driveways, because they will be sharing a driveway, so there will be the responsibilities and who does what, that sort of thing, so we'll spell all that out.
And the reason for that long driveway is because that's the only dry parcel on that particular lot and you're not taking a driveway off of Pheasant Lane, because that's wet also, right?
The frontage on Pheasant Lane only runs about 147 feet back from 108, it's just a short little segment.
Right. Would you consider not putting that house there at all, then you don't need a long driveway?
This is true. But I will say in defense of that, though, it's eight lots in total. We're leaving 12 and 1/2 acres of land with that last lot, so we're not looking to maximize the property. It's not, you know, it's certainly not a cluster, but it's certainly not a complete subdivision of the entire property. There's probably, I would say, four to five more lots available back there if you were to do roadways and all that sort of thing, but of course with roadways, town has to take ownership, there's more maintenance for the town, and there's a lot more site impact, wetland impacts with the roadway, that sort of thing. So Terry elected to go with street furnished lots.
And that parcel will have right-of-way off of Walnut Farm Road.
That right-of-way is still in effect, this doesn't negate that at all. Right. Excuse me? When the long-eared bats aren't nesting in there. No, no, no. As far as I know, there's no plans for that. I can't promise you they wouldn't do a selective cut, but I have no, there's no indication they're going to do any sort of clear cut or anything like that.
Would you be willing to?
Because you're in, when you're in the subdivision process, you're not allowed to clearcut the property, and I think you'd probably run in this, right, so it has to stay as-is. Right, so it has to stay as is through the subdivision process. But, I mean, to make the lots marketable, I would imagine you want to try and leave as much of the tree cover as you possibly can. These are nice country lots, and 108 does have its share of traffic, so to try and get the cars, the houses back a little bit and leave a little bit of buffer to 108, I think would be, you know, probably the best layout on these lots.
So technically, we're only going to see the driveways cut on 108, and maybe some for the drainage?
You'll see some for the drainage. You'll see a little bit for site distance to trim some of the bushes back. There are some areas on 108, although we have site distance, you wouldn't know it's standing there right now, but you can, once you've removed the bushes and take care of that, then you're going to have ample site distance for all the driveways. So, yeah, to answer the question, I foresee a fairly tight tree cutting around the house area, not big lawns here. And then just from the road, you'll probably just see the driveway cuts in.
Mr. Zott.
On lots, on lot 460, is the driveway going to run along the property line up to the proposed house location?
Yes. And it does appear slightly in order to see what many times.
No, I'm talking about lot 46.
Well, you make the...
A lot next to it. Yeah, that lot. So that, you saw the driveway ends there. I'm assuming it goes up to the house, right?
Yeah, it goes up here.
Does it plan to run along, along the edge of the property, or...
Well, I think if the board's going to decide one, it's going to be all coming in here.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that...
Your shared driveway, your shared driveway regulations require it actually run along the property line.
But I'll have to run that by, obviously, the property owner and the applicant here, but I don't think that would be a difficult change.
You just said it has to run along the property line. This one doesn't. It's in the middle.
The shared driveway coming up from four or five.
Right by the one by Wentworth, it doesn't...
It's not on the property line.
No, we got the three, four, six.
Right. The straight part is pre-existing.
Right, but the shared driveway isn't pre-existing.
That's why they were talking, he was talking about, instead of having that T to go to 46, they would take that off, make that just an individual driveway, and then put another T off the long driveway to 46, so that there's not that much impact right across from Wentworth.
Should we make a determination of jurisdiction before we start getting deep into the weeds?
Completeness of jurisdiction, yes, that would be appropriate. People just got carried away. It was a healthy discussion. Can I have a motion on completeness and taking jurisdiction?
Make a motion that we find that the application is complete and that we take jurisdiction.
Is there a second? Mr. Zott, was that a second? Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Got your unanimous?
No, I do have another question. Have you, did you ever consider moving the house on 1-4 to sort of the north end? And that way they're making it accessible from the, extending the driveway between 4-1 and 4-2?
Can you just upsteer further north?
No, the one in the back. Instead of, instead of moving it...
Oh, instead of, instead of having it up here?
Yeah, right. That would make a shorter driveway.
Yep.
You would...
I don't know, you know, if it's appropriate to look at that.
Is that wetland over there?
I think you would have actually more wetland impact.
More wetland impact doing that? Okay.
If we just get rid of it, then you don't have to worry about it.
Quite frankly, the, that difference in length, I think you'd still have the same issue, for what that's worth.
See how wide the wetlands is from here to...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Compared to much smaller impact here.
Okay.
No, I understand, you know, a little bit of apprehension with the longer driveway. You know, I certainly want to make this safe, and I don't want any issues to arise from this design. So, like I said, I'll take the time to go through the requirements. I'll meet with the fire chief and make sure any of his concerns are addressed, and see if we can come back with something a little bit more amenable to the board. But they're not unusual, I will say that. You take a quick Google spin down Heath Street and Peaslee Crossing, you'll see shared driveways in excess of 600, 700 feet. They are out there, but if we can do something to make this a better driveway, we'll certainly do it.
That's always preferred. Any further questions before I open it up to a brother?
Yeah. Does this fall on the MS4 permit?
This area is not in your MS4 area. And at this point, you do not have any regulations, other than your existing, they can't produce more stormwater off the site than would naturally occur. You have no regulation that requires anything in addition. That's why you have your stormwater pre and post discharge.
Thank you.
Very good. I'm assuming there are some brothers here? Would anybody wish to make comment or question?
Yeah, come on up. Would you...
Please step up to the microphone, identify yourself.
Do you want him to address the board?
All questions have to be addressed to the board.
Nope, you have, you have to address the board and then...
Actually, after looking at this, I kind of got my answers. My other question I have, there's a pond that's right next door, probably about 30 feet wide, after the wide's 15. So I guess that's going to be left alone. There's a few creeks that run into it, and I noticed when it was low, there's an underground water source that's feeding it, getting it to.
Can you point to, on this plan, the location you're talking about? So there, that is proposed to actually be one of the house lots, though?
Yes.
So at this point, they are not proposing to do anything with that wetland? And if they did, they would have to get state permits, and they would also not be able to do anything within 50 feet of a wetland in Newton. Yes, that will only be a single-family house.
That's why I came here. I didn't understand if you were going to put like a townhouse as a drop-in lot, that's why.
Sir, could you give me your name again and say it slower so I can get it down?
William Stewart, S-B-U-W-A-R-T.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Are people at this point ready to make any further motions, or, I mean, we know that we're looking at possibly one driveway redesign?
At this point, I would not say you're ready to do a conditional approval. I think you should discuss some, let results come back with the driveway changes that have been discussed, and also the stormwater drainage for Pheasant Lane, the culvert that goes under there, to get a little bit more information.
Right.
I don't think there's a lot of other information that I've heard the board express.
Other than that, it's fairly straightforward.
I just had some questions about the driveways and like the, it says they're 40 feet wide. So I didn't know, like, if we have driveway...
It must, I think that's in reference to the easement.
The easement, right.
The easement that captures the driveway.
Yeah. It's 40 feet wide, but the...
That's not the phase area, that's...
Right. It's 20 feet of pavement.
Yeah, the driveway widths vary. They're wider for when it's shared, so that you could have vehicles pass one another. And then when they get into the single ownership, it's 12 feet, the typical 12-foot driveway.
I was trying to look at some of these numbers.
I know, I for one would like to see that funky Y on the pre-existing driveway disappear. It just... There's something about it that just sits in my craw.
Okay.
So which means you'd rather have him add that to the long driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
Still, we still would replace the culvert there for that driveway.
Well, I realize that. I just, that, I always have a problem when somebody's property is mostly bisected by somebody else's driveway. You end up then with a parcel down near the road that most home, many homeowners I've seen it, big time, it's out in Hampstead, where they have a driveway that goes up and it splits like that, and the person who owns that little section down by the road just gives up.
That is a good point, yeah. I mean, if the board is amenable to adding the driveway to the subtly driveway, to make that a shared by three, I think that's a clean, simple solution. It reduces the traffic across from Wentworth, so...
Very much so.
That definitely sounds like a better option.
Yeah.
And like I said, I don't think DOT would have a problem with that at all. But you never know. Hopefully not.
Right. Do we not need language included on the plan, too, that says that the, the shared driveways would be on the deeds? That all that will be included onto the deeds, too? Do we not have to have that on one of these plans somewhere?
I would like to see it there, though. It's more important that it be on the deed than on the plan.
Well, we have a rule that says it has to be on the Mylar. It's on page 13, number E on shared driveways. Says the language has to be on the Mylar recorded copy.
I did something similar to that in Danville recently, and we just had a note on there basically stating, it called out the homeowner's documents, the shared driveway maintenance agreement, and the easement language. Those were called out on the plan to be recorded here with, with the plan.
And that the town is not liable for whatever.
Yeah, that's a pretty typical. The other aspect, and this typically would be done more of a condition, is that you want your town attorney to review the driveway easement documents once they've been produced.
Correct. If there are no more questions at this time, I will entertain a motion to continue to November 13th.
The 13th, or that's the work meeting, or the 27th? Okay, 13th?
Yeah, the 13th is our next meeting.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
All right, thank you very much for your consideration. Appreciate it.
And like I told the applicant before, if you have any new plans, please do not plan on bringing them the night of the meeting.
We need them before.
Do you need, what do you need for lead-in time as far as revised plans?
I need...
You need them a week ahead?
10 of these and three large.
A week ahead of time.
About a week ahead? Okay, all right.
I mean, if you send it electronically, it saves you a couple of sets, but...
We're not anywhere near finished.
Continuing on, under board minutes, acceptance of minutes from the 10-9-18 meeting?
Moved to accept the minutes from, from 10-9-18.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, gentlemen, we're still trying to conduct business here.
Who seconded that? Thank you.
Did anybody note any errors or omissions?
Like I said, if I make the motion, I'm happy with them.
Okay. Anybody else note any errors or omissions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay.
Standing, because I wasn't at the meeting, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Zott is abstaining. I should explain...
It would be wrong for me to vote on minutes for me, and I was not, I haven't had...
Unless you believe that there is material, there is something materially wrong with the minutes, you can still vote either in favor or opposed.
Excuse me?
I said, that's why I did, correct.
And Ms. Estherbrook, may I have your envelope?
There's a difference.
Okay, Andy.
You want my stamp?
Yes.
Yes.
Speaking of stamps...
Okay.
Okay, moving along to the manifest. Okay, I have a NEPR manifest in the amount of $536.09. Or have a motion to pay?
Move to pay?
Would you like me to re, okay. There's a petty cash for $113.90 for Trudell. There is a petty cash payment for $20.10 from Ground Care, that's Cunningham. And there's a payment to K.V. Pottness for $402.09, and that is being billed to Father and Son Realty.
Move to pay.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, and the chair will sign.
Are you voting? Did you vote? Okay.
Yeah, I made him a voting member earlier.
Okay, no, I didn't see him put his hand up. That's why I'm asking.
And next we have an operating budget manifest in the amount of $87.72, of which $20 is going to, for postage, another $4.50 for postage, and $63.22 for telephone.
Move to pay.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. The chair will sign those when she's finished.
Okay.
Next item, you'll find at your place this evening, a copy of the budget and the budget proposal?
Nope, voluntary, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Budget's next. You're right. Sorry.
You have here the budget from last year. I would like to think that we can very quickly fill in the proposed 2019 budget lines, with the exception of, are we looking? I don't believe that we have any anticipated increase for the circuit rider.
No, I mean, it's generally under 5 percent. It's generally more like two or three. But our rates will be going up next year, most likely.
Again, yep.
Yeah, we try, we try to do small study instead of having big jumps.
Except for the fact that we didn't approve that when we did the budget back in.
I don't know that you would have done it for the next fiscal year, because our circuit riders start July 1.
Right, okay. Oh, yeah, so that's...
You did dues.
That's in the next budget cycle.
You did dues, you didn't do.
Okay, and I don't believe we went up in the dues at all.
They went up maybe one or two cents per person.
However, since there are additional houses going in, our dues with the OPC will go up a very small amount.
They charge a dollar two or a dollar three per person?
Right. However, right at the moment, we appear to be spot on the money at 49.01 for budget and expense. So if we don't increase that line by 20 bucks...
We're going to overrun it.
I can, I can picture our bookkeeper looking at us going, "You went over on that line item." Does anybody want to make any comments, or...
We need to make a motion to increase that one, or comment to increase that one?
Well, if you're going to increase that, that line, you have to figure out where it's going to come from.
Oh, because they're not going to change the bottom line. I would, I would say take some money out of travel.
I don't think we should do that. I think the training and travel budget needs to stay where they're at.
Yeah, because the, the big travel items haven't been in. That's the sending to the OPC. Train, training.
You can lose 50 bucks out of legal, pretty easily.
You lose 50 out of legal.
Okay, so...
So we'll make legal 4,000.
And make dues and subscription 4950.
51.
4951.
Is there any particular reason why that is?
Someplace that an extra dollar appeared.
Well, the other thing, the circuit rider contract. How much do we need to increase that by the?
I was, honestly, to err on safe, I would go by 5%. It's generally more like two or three.
Right, so $183 could very easily disappear.
That's about two and a half hours of time.
Right.
Do we need to find some more money for copier, copies?
Well, that's like the maintenance of the copier and everything.
I was just gonna say, that's the maintenance, and I know we will be getting a bill soon because I just replaced the toner cartridge.
So we've already run it all, we've already doubled what we budgeted for it?
Right, that's why I'm pointing that out.
And if more bills are coming, we need to increase that line.
Do we anticipate buying any more equipment this year?
Quite honestly, after today, sorry, after yesterday at the computer in there, I do believe that it is time for us to look at Gale and say, start hunting for a new computer because.
$1,000 buys a lot of computer.
Well, exactly.
When?
And we should be able to move some of this equipment purchase money to copiers and.
Last year, we upped that from somewhere else in the budget to cover a new computer.
But we didn't buy it yet.
Right.
So now we've got the money in there to buy it. The programs that need to be loaded onto it.
Exactly.
Probably the smart thing to do then is to buy it before the end of this year.
Well, I was just gonna say, we have a couple more meetings where we could actually approve the expenditure because I will tell you, the selectmen is very close to freezing the budget. So. Gee, Mr. Zott, you are really good with computational devices and various moriades.
I can come back with a proposal of what we, I think we should buy. Is that what you're getting at?
I was just gonna say, if you want to come in on Thursday or Monday, it would be nice if for our next meeting, we could come up with a proposal. This machine has not died, it's just.
Monday, Monday sounds good.
Okay, Monday, someplace between nine and five. Okay. So anyway, we may be able to look at that because, quite honestly, our printer is current enough. If we replace our computer, I can't think of any major piece of equipment that we would need specifically off the bat. So we could probably take some money out of there and.
Well, you say year-to-date expense. Year-to-date, how far into, when was that?
Year, that's year-to-date.
As of when?
As of, I believe it was a week and a half ago.
So, the salary for the administration, we've got enough room in there and we don't need to increase that line.
No, that's comfortable.
That'll cover any reasonable increases and things that we need to cover for that.
But I believe we can honestly take.
Could we take something out of consultant?
Well, no, I was just gonna say, out of equipment purchase, I believe that we could probably take $500 easily out of that.
Okay.
Okay.
And remove it to circuit rider contract?
And remove it to circuit rider contract. The other issue is, that gives us enough there so that when next year's circuit rider, and every year they vary because. Well, next year, we don't have a primary in September, so we will be meeting in that.
Right.
So it covers additional meetings or what have you. I would also like to see us take probably, reduce that to, that equipment purchase to 900.
And move the 300 to copies?
Excuse me?
And move that 300 dollars to copies or to where?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, put 300 dollars more in copies.
Okay. Remind me what the advertising is?
We're actually gonna use that next year. That is when we have to advertise. If somebody submits a citizen petition for a warrant article.
Okay, alright, that's when it's not billed on a NEPR, okay.
If we have a public hearing on the stormwater when we get it done, that's where.
Ordinance changes, okay.
Those, that's where that will come from.
Gotcha, so that stays the same.
The rest of it looks pretty good.
So I just bring this up, we've had this conversation before. Your master plan is largely out of date. If that is something that you are interested in pursuing next year, you need more detail, I can always draw up something that kind of gives what the breakdown of what a master plan chapter or chapters can cost. But you're generally looking at it on an average, chapter by chapter, $5,000, $6,000. Per chapter, yeah. I mean.
That's a warrant article thing, though. For those types of, for that, largely expensive. We're not gonna put that in our budget.
Especially when they're gonna freeze the budget.
Different towns do it differently, so. Some towns will do a warrant article to do a full master plan, and they'll do 40,000, they'll do 80. It kind of depends on what the town is looking to do.
Okay, just going down the list. We're leaving advertising at 300. The circuit rider contract, if Mr. Hamble would like, I will convert that to 12, 945 instead of 944.
Okay.
That gets rid of the odd $1 bill. Consultant services at 4,000, copies at.
We dropped that $50?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Still 40, 50.
That's where the $50 that I added to. Oh, okay, sorry. That's why I'm going over it all. Copies will go up to 5,000. Dues and subscriptions will become 4950.
50, okay, so now all the ones match up.
You're gonna make that even, okay?
Yep. Equipment purchase goes down to 900. Legal stays at 4050.
No, legal.
4,000.
Okay.
Because we stole 50 to put up.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, manuals at 100, office supply at three, postage at three, salary administration at 19.
450.
450. Telephone at 860. Training at 400.
And travel at 500.
And travel at 500.
So that comes out to the same.
The same amount.
49.
So the planning board has maintained a level budget for the past four years.
Yay.
I will type this, I will type this up and submit it to the Board of Selectmen on Thursday. Can we have a motion to adopt that as our budget?
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Now we'll move along to the voluntary lot merger. Okay, you have in your board packet a letter from Andrea Louie, the town's assessor, that they had received a voluntary lot line.
Lot merger.
Lot line merger, not lot line request, from Kathleen Moore and Robert Vicos of 51 Wylers Road. Per the planning board guidelines, she hasn't closed the completed application and a check made out to the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds for 1650, which covers the recording deeds. This is basically. If you flip your packet over, it's.
Six and seven.
Six and seven are on, sort of right above the O in country.
Oh.
Oh, yes.
Those two lots. We actually, there is nothing for us to.
As long as it's not making a non-conforming lot.
Right, and it's not. It's making it better.
Yeah.
Making it less conforming.
It's still a non-conforming lot, but it's less non-conforming.
So lot seven disappears, there's no longer a lot? It all becomes one in a century.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, five and six, the assessor's office is responsible for assigning it a new number, whether it's 70 or 72. Sorry, whether it's 68 or 70. I always look at.
51, 41, or 59 right now, did I put it on the wrong side or something?
Yeah, what is it?
Okay.
That's the street address.
Yeah, that's the street address now, so this is 77 to 50.
Anyway.
Six and seven are the lot, are the, that's, these numbers on here are the map block lot numbers, not the addresses.
Right. But I thought that the, these numbers were the house numbers.
I don't think so.
Anyway, the assessor, either way, the assessor will be responsible for doing that. What we need is a motion to authorize the board chair to sign the recording document which stipulates by signing below, the applicant has reviewed, was, has been reviewed by the Newton Planning Board, and the lot shall not result in violation of the current zoning ordinance or subdivision regulation. Thank you. Is there a second?
We're certifying that it doesn't violate the zoning, but it does.
No, it doesn't.
It makes the lot less non-conforming.
But it's still not conforming.
It doesn't have to become, it's a legal, they're both legal lots. You're making them more conforming.
You're removing a non-conforming lot.
Right, and one of them was really little.
Yeah.
Right now, technically, somebody.
Right, oh yeah, I understand, I just, right, yeah.
But it's not a violation of the zone, it's not a violation of the zoning for them to merge.
Okay.
They are still non-conforming. It is.
So sub six and sub seven will become sub six. So, yeah, it's already on here.
So, any further discussion on authorizing? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. I will find, Thursday I will find the.
The original one.
Item E is correspondence. The only thing that I had for correspondence was the fact that we received an invitation to the Rockingham Planning Commission Legislative Forum, which will be on.
It's on November 7th, on Wednesday, November 7th, at UNATIL. It's free. The topic is growing younger, trying to see what municipalities and the region can actually do to help reverse some of the demographic trends to try and pull in a younger demographic for a variety of purposes. But right now, New Hampshire and Rockingham County is all becoming a gray or older state and trying to reverse the trend of having actually, having more steady cohorts going through our system. So that's what the topic's going to be. And it's aimed towards legislators and those people that are running. It is the day after the election, so.
You have two representatives.
Mr. Zott?
Not me.
Oh, sorry.
Other than that, is it?
Well, just on this thing about that putting, if I remember right, like our calculation for elderly housing or 55 and over housing, it's calculated on how many people are in town, but it lets you include the 55 and over communities in that calculation?
It's calculated on the number of housing units you have in town.
Right, but you're allowed to use the 55 and over calculation too, which, like you said, in Newton and surrounding towns, we've had a lot of those kind of developments.
Yeah, trying to, I might be mixing you up with one of my other towns, but it's not uncommon to, as you're increasing your dwelling units, it's just based on, that you're kind of double counting, as you get more senior housing, you could have more senior housing.
Right, but in a way, if they're trying to make that limited, you could take that out and say they can't be calculated into the calculation.
You could rework your zoning.
We'd like senior housing.
Yeah, well, she just said they were trying to figure out a way to do maybe not so many senior housing and get some younger people around.
Tax impact on the school is seen as one of the pros.
But like I said, we are becoming an elderly population.
In general, yes.
In general.
Newton's probably within that trend.
I was just gonna say, we're joining that trend.
Yes, I'm soon, yeah, yeah.
I have something, okay. We talked, Roger brought up at the last meeting about, that we didn't need to notice in the newspaper. So, Jen was gonna find out, and I actually, just my personal opinion on it is, although we might not have to, we don't pay for it, the applicant pays for it, and this way we're sure that even if somebody's not at a butter, any interested party is able to come here and listen to what's going on. And they may not know that if they're not directly noticed, if they don't see it in the paper. So I'm thinking that we should still keep it, but we could, we could take it out of our rules. Planning Board Rules of Procedure on Number 12. All we'd have to do is take some verbiage out of the last paragraph on Number 12 to, you know, because it says, "and published in a local newspaper of general circulation." We could take it out if we wanted to, but I still think it's a good idea to keep it in the paper.
Well, the reason why I thought it was such a good idea, it had nothing to do with cost. It really had to do with a matter of timing. Because some of the time, I know, we had, a few months ago, we had this big discussion about, basically if someone comes in today and wants to have a public hearing, they can't do it in two weeks, it's gonna be at least a month by the time you get it to go into the newspaper.
Right.
So legally, so, per the question that came up, it is vague at best. I think one interpretation is, you don't have, just not even worrying about Newton-specific regulations. It says to hold a public hearing. And then if you fall to the general noticing for a public hearing rules, yes, it does have to go in the paper. But the RSI doesn't specifically say that for planning board applications. So I think you could get away with not noticing it in the paper.
What general noticing, because I sent you the references. And I mean, they were noticing things for site plans?
Yes.
Which clearly says you just follow the local rules.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is that there's general noticing for a legislative body, of which the planning board and.
Where is that, do you know?
I'd have to go back to look at the exact reference.
It's under administrative rules, isn't it?
No, no, it's six. I'd have to go back to look at it, but it does say that the legislative body, if you have to hold a public hearing, you notice it for, and this would be for a selectman public hearing or for a ZBA public hearing, you have to notice it. I agree with you that in, it's either in the site plan or subdivision, it doesn't specifically cite the general noticing requirements in that RSA.
Right, it's really specific that, this is, because the one about to enact a zoning ordinance, that's.
That has to go in the.
That has to go to the newspaper.
That absolutely has to go in the paper.
That has to go to the newspaper. The RSA said that has to go to the newspaper. The one for procedures on Platts says you follow the local regulation. Because you have to have a public hearing, and it has to be posted or publication as required by the subdivision regula- Because you have to have a public hearing, and it has to be posted or publication as required by the subdivision regulations.
Right, which don't, which commonly refer to the normal noticing, but don't always.
No, it's the town's subdivision regulations.
Right, I'm saying those town subdivision regulations commonly refer to the generally, general noticing requirements.
It's whatever you've passed.
I understand, I'm not disagreeing with you. The general best practices that people, in O S I's Planning Board Handbook specifically states, "While not required to be noticed in a paper, it is strongly recommended that towns do." So there's that. As far as the timing, applications have to be received 21 days before the next planning board meeting to which they are to be heard. Now, because of that requirement, it used to be 16 days, it switched maybe 3 or 4 years ago to 21 days. The reason it switched to the 21 days was to actually better allow towns to review, and any staff or consultants, they have to review applications, to allow more, quite frankly, more time for an applicant to get information that was incomplete before the public hearing. So the fact that they have to be in 21 days to the town before the meeting can even occur, should fit with the most noticing requirements for a paper. It doesn't get to the cost, but as far as the timing aspect.
Because what happens with the Carriagetown News is you have to have it by Tuesday of this week, to get it in to the Thursday paper of the following week, and which has to be 10 days before the next meeting.
Right.
You can't count the day that it's in the paper, you can't count the day--
And that's why it would be advantageous not to have it in our regulations.
But we don't have to put it in the Carriagetown News.
You could put it in Boston North, you could put it in the Union Leader, which is what a lot of towns do.
I gave you that.
No, 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 on the inside of the Brown folder, it has the--
I gave it back to you. It's right here.
You could certainly put in the Union Leader.
We don't have to notice it in the Carriagetown News. It could be in another newspaper, and they have, they don't have as long of a timeframe. We could do, not the excerpt or newsletter, but the--
Maybe do the Hampton Union, I think?
No, the--
Union Leader.
Union Leader.
Yeah, Beacon Tribune too, I think a lot of people around here get that one.
The reason why we went where we went, was because of the cost.
But we don't pay for it.
I know, but that's why we went that way, was because of the cost.
Right.
And before, everyone used to get that paper, now you only get it if you have a street address, they don't leave it at the post office anymore.
So now less people get it. I don't get 2 anymore, thank goodness.
Might be good to change to a different paper.
We have to have a, by our laws, you have to have 21, officially has to be in 21 days early. By our schedule, it has to be in 26 days early, so it's a 5-day differential.
Right.
Quite frankly, when working in the back office, the number of times that people have walked in 3 hours past the deadline and ranted and raved, because, yeah, you're gonna have to wait another meeting, I prefer to leave it at the way it is, because otherwise, people will wait until the last minute to give you anything. Yeah.
That's true.
You know, I'm not naming names, I'll tell you in private. But you can probably guess.
Actually, the list is long.
Okay, I just wanted to, because I remember that Jen had said, well, you have to have it, if it's in our rules of procedure, that's where you'd have to take it out of. And if we decided not to have that, we would need to take it out of here, but, just, we're good, we're good.
If you do want to amend it, though, let's look for other things in your site and subdivision regulations that are kind of housekeeping cleanup things, so you have one public hearing to--
Right.
Make them all conform, yeah.
There's certainly things in your subdivision and site plans I could use just cleanup, not necessarily changing, but--
Sure, okay.
Anything further? There are none?
I just have one thing, actually. We've been not talking about stormwater in the past couple of meetings, because we've been busy. Looks like the next, so the 13th meeting, we're gonna have at least 2 applications that are continuances. Do we want to dedicate the 2nd November meeting, so the 26th?
Nothing but stormwater.
To actually going through from the beginning, because it's been a while, and I know you all still have your copies and your notes--
Yes.
Going through it, I'm not gonna make the changes until we get all the way through it, but to just reemphasize sort of where we've come.
I think it would be a good idea.
And then we'll continue on, I mean, we won't spend quite as much time as we have, but, would that make sense?
Yes.
It'd be nice if we could get it down--
And then we could maybe finish it by then, that would be good.
I mean, we don't, there's not a whole lot left, it's primarily sort of the enforcement aspect.
That's actually something that this town really needs to consider. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have another question. Why was this left in here?
Yes, everybody--
Not debatable.
Not debatable.
That came from--
If you notice, I'm not recognizing anybody, it's just, this is a point of information. At everybody's place tonight, I placed a copy of a document that Barbara received, I don't know if you want to go into any very brief description?
Over in the other town where I work, they had gotten a copy of that, and I just decided to share it with the board.
Oh, okay.
It's a really useful document for 80 years.
You have a nice, clean copy, and it's perfect, so you can put it in the back of any one of your binders. Now I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Thank you, second?
Second.
None debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.